October. Five Rundle Select Board Meeting to Order. We begin with Fledge of Allegiance. And approval of the prepared agenda.
Mr. Chair, I do have an RSU 21 report. And I'd also ask that we move the TIF assessment error. Right after this so that the Lena can. Continue on with her business.
Have a second to that?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Hearing that all in favor? So yeah. Lena, you're up to educate us, or at least me.
Yeah, Lena, come on up to the table and then I'll, you know. I asked Lena to be here tonight simply to answer any specific questions that you may have as to what occurred. As I told you on the, I provided to you a memo on the 16th. From me about the assessment and error for the TIF directly related to Rundle cottages. I provided to you Lena's response or her information relative to what occurred. And then I also provided in the, in your packet, some options for us to consider to correct the assessment error. But essentially, staff along with Lena were looking at and couldn't balance the budget. It was discovered that part of the TIF assessment calculation, the money that had to be returned to the Rundle cottages as part of the TIF agreement was not calculated into the assessment. As a result of that, the money, the dollars were off and we couldn't balance the the assessment out and furthermore, part of her investigation discovered the error. And she's here to answer any questions relative to that. What I'd like to do tonight is after you ask when any questions of her, I'd like to go through the options and feel which one that you feel that we should consider moving forward to correct the error.
That's a pretty accurate recap there. I did my best to provide you with the information to be able to visualize the number that had been utilized in that field versus what really should have been. I have been in contact with Main Revenue, Property of Tax Property Tax Division. Clarifying, verifying that it is in fact true that the the amount of funding from the TIF that gets returned to the developer as part of that TIF agreement is supposed to be included in that line 16C on the MVR, which is where I had excluded the amount that gets returned to the developer. I only included the amounts that the town retains from the two separate tips. And that was an error on my part. I tried to show you where that is on the MVR and the tax rate calculator form. The first page showing what, what was there, what we utilized to commit and then what it would have done to the mill rate had it been on there the way that it should have been. It is excess funding that is not being collected now from the taxpayers. Because of the way that it works into the formulas, it's been omitted from the expenditures, if you will, so wasn't collected, under collected. And that's where Keith is, you know, kind of giving some options of where the town can go from here. For my part, I just want to make sure that I can answer any additional questions you have in any aspect of that.
Anyone good, yeah?
Lena, was this something that was missed because of our evaluation? Or I mean, what, why did this pop up this year and not in the years past?
Good question. It is a combination of, of factors. I think the biggest factor being that I misinterpreted the necessary info there. I'm not going to beat around the bush. I, I read that instruction sheet from Main Revenue. I interpreted that need there. I thought that I double checked with a couple other folks to make sure I was interpreting it correctly. But because I'm new to the town, new to the two tips that we have, and because of the revow, couldn't really as easily just look at last year's values because everything is so extremely different. And the Cape Rundle Cottage Preserve TIF in particular, within this past year has had a lot of shifting around of the value from parcel to parcel. They actually transferred a big chunk of land into different parcels. So the valuation of even what was there previously was being assessed on different parcels. In addition to the fact that the valuations are so different now too, it was just, there was no real way to compare against last year. And I felt confident that what I did was accurate. And unfortunately, I have found out that that was not the case and.
I, I think also to her defense and something the Department of Revenue has already indicated her, the instruction manual was a little bit confusing. And as a result of that, they're going to change their construction manuals to be more clearly as to how that process goes. So I think there were a lot of things that played into, into this aspect. And it's unfortunate, but it's something that we can correct with your leadership and your votes. We can get it taken care of.
So Keith, just to be clear, that's a state instruction manual?
That is correct.
That covers that. There, there wasn't an intern, there wasn't in a Rundle memo writing up?
No.
How, how this tip should be treated? Is that correct?
That is correct.
To you up top, it says that this is an excerpt from, and I did a copy and paste chunk of the, the first page of the instruction sheet because it's a long document. And then I just wrote continued on and on page five, I did another screenshot or copy and paste just of that section that's giving the instructions to that section so that you can see what I was looking at. I, again, I, I believe that my interpretation of that was accurate at the time with the commitment. And that's the language there that is, it is a state document on the state's website for assessors to be filling out this 11-page commitment spreadsheet. And as Keith mentioned, I, I do think that based on my discussions with them so far, that that's likely to be edited for clarification for next year.
Just as a suggestion, I think that it would be prudent for staff of the town of Rundle to write up step by step. This TIF is complex and unusual. I more familiar with TIFs than the average person might be, and I still found it weird. So just going forward, the, the fact that there wasn't anything in your, in files or Rundle for the Cape Rundle Cottage is, I, I think is unfortunate.
I think that's a very, very prudent advice. I, I agree wholeheartedly. I, I have already done that. I did create several documents outlining where the different properties had parts in and out of the TIF, a lot of information that wasn't really, I had to decipher. That is now well documented for future years. If I was to not be here, another assessor would be able to make easier work of this than I don't anticipate they would have a problem in the future. We, we were very fortunate here in our bundle to have had the same assessor for 20 years. Not making any excuses for myself, but I think that's an often overlooked advantage that, you know, she, she had everything streamlined and she knew what she was doing and she was able to be very consistent with things, which was really great for the town for many, many years. Unfortunately, not great for me because she knew it so well. She didn't necessarily leave a great trail for, for the next person coming in because she just knew it all. But it's a blessing in disguise. So blessing and a curse.
So any more questions for Lena?
Questions? Want to take up the solution?
I, I think we, we should. As, as I did, I provided four options for you folks to consider. For the, for the public here, just to let them know, the assessment that we're in error of is 507,859.17 that should have been assessed, which would have given us a tax rate of $8.60 instead of $8.20. So my first proposal and option one would be to, to obviously go back to a special town meeting and request the 500,000 to be taken from the fund balance. We have remaining balance of about 1,466,000 remaining that could be utilized for that.
After the 500 comes out?
Yeah, we, no, before the 500 comes out, we have 1.4 million. So once we take the 500 out, whatever the balance is remaining. That's option one. Option two would be to take $250,000 from fund balance and the remaining balance from the road construction budget, which, which if you recall, we've set aside 650,000 in tax dollars to pay for road paving and construction work next year. That would be option two. Option three would be to remove 400,000 from the road construction budget. And the remaining 100,000 would be taken from the operating budgets of the municipal departments. So that we would take a percentage out of general administration here, Public Works, Fire Department, Recreation, to make up that $100,000 difference. And then the final option would be to do a supplemental assessment to pick up the 40 cents per thousand for, for the remainder to make it $8.60 instead of $8.20. My recommendation obviously would be, because we have the option, would be to go with option one and to hold a special town meeting and ask the taxpayers or the voters to provide us the authority to spend the 500,000. And so I would put them in the options that I provided to you as my recommendations to you.
Could the, could the Public Works Director or, or you Keith? Give us some detail about the 650,000 for road construction? What, what, I guess the big ticket items are in there and, and what the timing is?
I, I certainly can provide to you the capital improvement road construction plan. I think we're in the year, is it nine or 10, Ben, into that? Okay, so we're into year nine. We do have that written out and it was proposed that the Budget Board and Select Board hearings prior to this, so I can make that available to you, but it provides the roads that we were considering for the upcoming year.
What, what I was trying to get at is, is because I didn't join the board until July, I'm unfamiliar with that document. And I don't have any sense for i- if, well, based on what you say about there being a long-term plan, it sounds as if, if we take 250,000 out of the allocation to road construction this fiscal year, we would impair our ability to stick with the plan and probably would have to make that up later. Is that in, in, in future years? Is that accurate? Or, 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 or is there 250,000 of costs in that plan that might be considered optional?
The, the plan really, Chip, is a moving document. And what I say by that is that oftentimes it's dictated by what our tonnage for, for, for pavement, what we get for a contract for that, as well as a, an overall assessment by the Public Works Department to look at the roads that actually need more, more than, more than what we had anticipated. And so oftentimes, some roads may get pushed off the list. Some roads, roads may get added to the list as a result of the way the, the plan is written. So and I'm sure Ben can fill in some of the things. Come on up, Ben.
So for example, last year, so fiscal year 2024, 2025, last year, one of the roads that was supposed to be paved was New Road. At the time, it was non-priority. It was moderate to better than moderate condition. So the Public Works Department decided to skip that road and to put on this year's docket. This year, we had 10 roads to pave. And based on a quick assessment of all the roads, New Road was in the better top two or three. I skipped it again. So we paved nine of our 10 roads this year. So in the last two years, we've skipped New Road and then Burn School Road was very small. So just on those two roads alone, we did not spend roughly $225,000 of money allocated to road construction. Additionally, there's one other road last year, but I'm blanking on that I care. I remember I brought the wrong notebook, that wasn't paved. So there was additional money that, it happens every few years, we skip roads because they're not needed right at the time. Other reasons. So next year is a decently busy paving year. I think there's seven roads on the paving docket. So if we, but we will not start that paving until likely at least June of next year. So around the next fiscal year, get ready to start paving again.
How much of the 650,000 has already been spent since July 1?
I don't believe any of that $650,000 that we're talking about has been spent.
You would, yeah, some of it I think would have been spent in this year. We, we'd have to get you that number. I don't know specifically what that number is right now.
You would get a single road in town that wouldn't survive a year or two? Without being paved? I think every road in town right now is pretty good.
I believe the worst road that was paved, that we had in town was paved about three months ago. So Boxcroft Road, pretty terrible condition that was paved a few months ago. I don't believe there's ever a road worse than that. I think if we didn't know paving next year, we'd be behind the gun for the following year, but we wouldn't be that, in that bad of condition.
And certainly paving costs are not going to go down. You know, whatever we put off now, we're only going to be more expensive next year, the year after, or what have you.
It'd negate some of those costs.
Right.
Mountain Road, for example, is, is I believe on next year's docket. It's a large road and it's a busy road. So it involves a large amount of asphalt, you know, several thousand tons of asphalt, plus, you know, the expense for flaggers and trucking. But there are sections of Mountain Road. Pretty much everything north of Bergeron is in better condition than everything south of Bergeron. If we had to, we could pave the south section this year coming and the following year pave the north section. That's already done for roads, for the very big roads, Limerick River, Bull Post are paved as sections instead of paving in one.
So what would that savings be if we were to do something like that?
It wouldn't save us any money, but it would defray the costs over four years.
But it would, but it would save us money in next year's budget?
Correct.
Right. And how much in next year's budget would that be?
I'd have to do, I'd have to call Dayton Sand and Gravel and get an updated quote for the tonnage.
Right.
I could have a quick number for you next couple of days, but I'd have to, I'd have to do a lot of measuring and some, some math.
I think, I think Dan does bring up a good point that the, the the cost of, of construction is just going to go up. And what you, what I'm reading into what you said is we might be able to defer some construction, but we're not, we have to maintain the roads. It's not an option. So by inclination, unless we want to defer this decision to get more detail on the roads, my, my, I, I would actually, maybe it's appropriate to make a motion?
Sure.
Okay. I, I, I would like to, to make a motion that we have a special town meeting to ask voters to approve the 503,000, 507,000 additional out of the general fund. Rather than taking money out of road construction and deferring those costs because we'll just have to add to, to taxes in future years. Before I stop with the motion, I would just want to make one thing clear. The assessed value of the cottages that should not have been included, that, that, that needs the taxes on that assessed value that go back to the developer is actually 61.9 million dollars. So the 507,000 is the tax revenue from that assessed value.
Right. So the, the error was not in the assessment at all. It was all fully it just was that portion that goes to the developer didn't get included in the calculation on the tax rate calculator as an expense of the town for the year because we're providing that 500, almost 8,000 back to the developer. So it was therefore under, under taxed or under billed to the property owners in town. It was assessed accurately, just, just not included in the expense to be captured income into the mill rate. That helps clarify. Not sure.
I heard you say the, the monies would come from the general fund. It wouldn't be coming from the general fund. It'd come from the undesigned.
Undesignated fund balance.
Right.
May I amend my own motion?
Absolutely.
Okay. I make a motion that we request approval from the voters to use 507,859.47 from the undesignated fund balance to make up the funds necessary to balance the budget.
Second for that?
I will second. I have discussions that I want to make, but I will second.
Motion second. Go ahead, Dan.
So Keith, if we do that, that leaves us with 958,381 in fund balance. I know that we normally like to keep above a million. Well, yeah, it leaves that. Plus, you have to remember, we already set aside the 20% to cover our, for the fund balance policy. So there's two and a, 2.5 million dollars has been set aside. So this is that money that has not been set aside, that can be utilized by the board. But you're right, we like to try to keep a healthy balance. And I think even with the removal of the 500K, if you look at our past history, we've been very, very good about budget tightening in our operating budgets. And we've always under, under projected what our revenue collection is going to be. So I'm hopeful that those two factors will help make up the difference that we're expending tonight.
My point of view, this is taxpayers' money. Simple as that.
Yeah.
They've already collected, might as well utilize it rather than try to shuffle around budgets that we've already established. That's a waste of time, in my judgment. Any further discussion, anybody? As to the motion, then, all in favor? Anonymous.
Thank you much. We appreciate it. My plan will be to try to have that special town meeting on November 10th, which will be our next, I think our next business meeting. Thank you. Thanks, Lena. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Don't be beating yourself up. Thanks again. Okay, next item is to approve the minutes of October 14th to 25. Motion Dan second to approve those minutes?
Second.
As prepared? Further discussions, changes? All in favor then? So approved. Standing agenda's public forums, anybody have a matter they want to bring to the board's attention that is not already on the agenda slated for discussion?
Diane Robbins-Mokas, Rundle Maine. I just wanted to bring something to your attention. I used to get a copy of every single selectman agenda and every planning board. I still get the planning board, but despite asking for it, Jen sent something to the office saying that I still wasn't getting the selectman meeting notices. I'm still not getting the selectman notices. I've asked for them. And I'm not the only one. It seems that there are several of us that no matter what we do, I've, I signed up for it. I've asked for it. I've asked them to look into it. I spoke to one of the girls in the office. She tried sending it to me. It wouldn't go through. And then she was supposed to talk to somebody else and then she didn't get back to me. So there seems to be something, I'm still getting the planning board one, but there seems to be some kind of a glitch with the selectman meetings and.
First I've heard of it, Diane. So obviously I'll talk to staff tomorrow and whoever's on that list, I didn't even know the list existed. I do know that we do post our agendas on the website. So they're there available to anybody who gets on the website, but this may be a courtesy that we've extended to folks that have asked it and I had no knowledge of it.
Oh, it's been going on for years where you can go in and say you want automatic notices of certain boards. But the selectman seems to be, it's the only one that I'm aware of, but I know that I'm not the only one that's affected by it.
Keith will look into that for you, Diane?
It stopped about the time that three of you things started. It's just. She was laughing. So you know.
Anybody else? Talking, want to address a non-agenda item? All good? All right, we'll move on. Meeting Board Report, Stan, RSU 21.
Yes. Monday, October 20th, RSU 21 Board of Directors meeting. They started with executive session at 6:45. They had two executive sessions. Started at 5:30, got done at 6:45. Then they went to another executive session and that one got done at 7:17. Then we started the regular meeting. Public comment. They've had at least, I lost count at 13, but I think there was like maybe one or two more individuals at, at public comment that stood up. And it really centered around, you know, transgender.
individuals at at public comment that stood up, and it really centered around, you know, transgender youth, sport for girls, sports, female athletes and equity and coaches, you know, it was all centered around that. Couple of times, it was pretty heated discussions, there were some folks from the from the general public that were throwing out comments here and there, and the chair really had to try to quiet that down, but so that took a little while, they extended that on two different occasions, got through all of that. Excuse me. So consent agenda items, there was a resignation of Katie Turner, she is the, she was the nutritional manager. She left, she went over to South Portland, she's working in South Portland now. The superintendent gave his update, he talked about family house at KCS. He mentioned that he'd like to hand out five dollar Dunkin' and Dunkin' Donuts cards. And somebody called him out at that meeting and he didn't have any cards with him, so he made sure that he went back and he handed out the cards. He talked about the central office being included in the TNTP survey. During budget discussion, there was a lot of talk about removing that survey during the budget. They are tied to a contract, so they really can't remove that from the budget, so they're trying to make the best use of that and add as much as they can to that. He attended the MLDPTA, was pretty impressed with that. Let's see, talked about, there's a NESDEC enrollment report, and it talked about all all the towns. And he did state that what they projected for Rundle seems to be very inaccurate. They didn't project the the growth that we've seen in a Rundle, so he's going back to looking at that. Committee reports, Brittany gave an update on the finance committee report, mostly what Velma talked about at the last meeting about the audit results, end of year savings. It did state that the efficiency assessment RFP is out, and then there is a vehicle replacement that they need, so the RFP is out about that. Matt talked about communications, talked about reviewing last year's goals and this year's priorities. Talked about the communication specialists and communication infrastructure, and also about website enhancements. Brian gave an update on a human resources, he basically stated that they looked at the last year's goals and kind of reassessing this year's goals and their priorities. And superintendent reviewing how they're going to handle handle that. He did state that, you know, there's been a lot of talk over the years, last couple of years about the turnover rate. And, you know, as you said, turnover rate is like twelve point seven percent and that is pretty, pretty consistent. Also, there was discussion about, you know, the superintendents, some folks have made comments, we've had, you know, whole bunch of superintendents over the years and Arundel was actually, RSU twenty one is actually pretty stable compared to the norm. Superintendents normally have a very high turnover rate. And he talked a little bit about that. Couple of policies, school board policy got approved, let's see, policy committee got approved. Public's right, freedom, freedom of information, that got approved, and the restraint and seclusion, those are all first read, those got approved. And a child find policy for a second read got approved, there was a discussion at the first reading whether that included five OCs, the difference between five OCs and IDPs, and that kind of got squared away and they approved that. Diane attended the MSBA delegation, and she kind of talked about how we were RSU twenty one was late to that game and was not prepared and was hoping that future boards, the RSU was a little bit more prepared when they go to those meetings. Under new business, the superintendent about talked about the board goals and the superintendent's goals, and those are going to be presented at the next meeting. And then he talked a little bit about a plan to plan to work together between all boards and towns. And then we didn't adjourn, but the meeting ended at nine twenty two, and then they went into another executive session, and I didn't hang around for that.
Thank you, Dan. With the committee and board reports, we'll move on to the managers' report.
Yeah, just a follow up, last Wednesday, we had attorney Rachon here to meet with the new members of the appeals board and provide them some training and overview of their duties and responsibilities. Select board member Hayes was also with us, and we thank her for coming and attending that. What I what I did after that meeting was that I ordered the appeals board manual for all the members of the of the appeals board, provides them from the MMA, it provides them a an oversight, gives them different case considerations that have been taken for variance variances and things to that that nature in in the document, so what we're doing now is just, I think they're prepared and ready to to take on whatever challenge comes to them. Right now, we have no pending, we we had one pending, but it's not pending right now because I have not received a a new check to submit the process to move forward, I have their application, but no check. So once I receive a check, then we'll we'll go from there. So that's that's all I have.
Didn't we have two pendings at one time, not too long?
We we had somebody that was saying that they may, but they never they never submitted anything to us for consideration. Next for me is I I gave you the document from attorney Rachon had developed for us for the objection to Mr. Thomas's recording of notices to prevent that were that were set up on signs that were placed on the cul-de-sac back in August. We have gone ahead and done an objection to that notice to prevent acquisition, really a nullified effort on our part, but just to make sure that the record is clear that we've had ours recorded at the registry along with what he had recorded, we requested that he withdraw his recording. But according to attorney Rachon, speaking with his attorney, he was not going to do that, so obviously we've we've recorded our objection to what he's provided there. Other than that, the the document just provides all the history that you already know about what has occurred on that process going back to, I think, nineteen eighty. And then all the way through, so clearly, we still have responsibilities for the cul-de-sac, they don't go away, it's still operated, maintained, plowed, I know to the public works demise probably that we got to continue to plow it, but that's part of the game. And so it's still town property, so.
What what are our steps going forward, are we doing anything to?
Not quite sure that we need to, there's nothing, there's nothing in in front of, from what I understand, the the information that the submittal of the subdivision process with with Mr. Thomas has not gone forward. In fact, I believe that they may consider because of the lack of interest in that, they may just take it off the docket at this particular point, nothing new has come forward. No presentation by him, so I'm not sure where that leaves us other than we've exercised our rights over the cul-de-sac at this point.
So the what about the original consent agreement, is that, you know, I mean, that still need to be done, does that need to be, or is what the letter that we presented makes that official? Because he still has to convey land over if that original.
Right, and he hasn't, he hasn't come forward with anything, so I don't think it's.
So we leave consent agreement without fault and moving forward?
Yeah, I I think it's a moot point at this particular point, until we have some sort of concrete application that's before us or before the planning board to to do something utilizing that cul-de-sac. I'm not quite sure that we should be doing anything else, I know that some of you folks still think that we should get ownership of certain pieces, but I'll leave that up to you folks to decide.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the that any of his plans or whatever have anything to do with whether we should move forward with that consent agreement, I mean, I I feel that we should there was a consent agreement that was not followed through, and I feel that we should follow through on that consent agreement, that's just my point, but.
I've been, I I just want to I I agree with Dan, and the consent agreement involved four or five pieces of of property. And I thought that we had already decided that the town would proceed to complete the actions contemplated by that consent agreement thirty years ago.
Tell them when you get that done, coaches go to court. Go enforce the agreement, the consent agreement, you want to spend the money to do that?
We we don't, we don't know that, right, and we don't know for sure, but.
I'm pretty sure that that's where you have to go. Look what's been going on, I mean, get that consent agreements of record, it puts everybody on notice of who owns what.
Right. Just so you know, we already spent over three thousand dollars for the efforts that have been done by attorney Rachon in this matter. So I have on that. The next thing is that I met with Larissa and Ira Camp from the Neighborhood Trust last week. And they're really interested in those two lots up there, map ten lot six and map ten lot five up off of Bergeron Drive. And they're really looking to see if if the town wishes to get involved financially to to any other efforts other than the conveyance of the properties at some point, asking the the voters for the conveyance of those properties to the Neighborhood Trust to do a development of workforce housing in that area, so what we talked about was perhaps making sure, having deed research done to to ensure that there's no liens or any other interest on those properties. And they were also concerned, even though there is a right of way off of Bergeron up through there to map ten lot six, they were still concerned about whether or not we should do some more research to ensure that we have exclusive use of that road and the ability to perhaps meet with the the abutters to see what kind of development because the road would have to be brought up to town standards in order to get in there, so what kind of reluctance we may have from the owners in and around that, so those two things, and then they they did throw out whether or not we wanted to get involved financially in the survey of that property as well, so I told them that I'd bring those forward to you folks if you wish to discuss them further. We certainly can, but they they're excited about what they would, what they expressed to me was that map ten lot six, which is the one that has a fifty foot right of way off of Bergeron Drive onto that property is the most desirable, that they would like to do probably a a ten unit cluster on that lot. No more than ten units, and that map ten lot five, which is behind that, I think it's fifteen acres or so. They would like to see if the Arundel Conservation Trust would like to perhaps put that in conservation easement along with perhaps whatever activity they're going to do with the rest of the cluster. So those were the, that was the projection they provided to me at this point, so not sure how much of a financial interest that you folks want to get into it in terms of road. Doing a little more research there, maybe perhaps bring the neighbors together. And or whether or not you want to go further in deed research on those lots to determine if there's any other people that have any interest in them.
Gotcha.
I just want to be, go, go ahead.
I thought we had talked about doing a survey, or either, you know, saying about getting a survey.
We talked about it very, very limited, yes, yep.
That was the first thing that we needed to do, we had talked about making sure that there was full access to those lots.
First thing you want.
Right.
So, okay, so I'm just re, I guess I'm just reconfirming in my own brain here that this is what you want, want to do, because it's going to cost us a few dollars. And so as long as you're prepared for that, that's fine with me, we'll move forward, we certainly have the funding in the so that includes the survey as well?
I don't know about survey, I think I want to look and see what the letter report first closes and what the access issue is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Survey is going to be.
Expensive, I think so too.
Yeah, but we've spent money for the.
So we'll do the, we'll do the deed research, make sure that we've got clear title to those properties, and then we'll perhaps do a little more deep dive into the road issue. And we'll probably have to get the abutters involved, so we may have to have them come to one of your meetings or or workshop or a public hearing with the with them to decide what we want to do. Okay.
I I would like to point out that this land, the total acreage is thirty, is it twenty five acres, thirty acres? What, what, whatever, it's it's in that.
I believe it's, yeah, it might be closer to forty, I can't recall, right?
It it that that is, those are assets that belong to the town. And I I think it's important that we don't at this point in time, don't just assume that we are going to be giving those assets to the Neighborhood Housing Trust. It might be that there there might be a private developer that that would like to purchase that. And that the purchase price would be worth something, what I'm getting at is if the town ultimately were to transfer ownership of this land to this Neighborhood Housing Trust, that that is an expenditure by the town, that's not just free. It's land that already belongs to the town, belongs to the taxpayers. And I want to make sure that we don't just assume that we're going in the a hundred percent in the direction of the housing trust, when we look at other alternatives.
There'd be, there's no assumption here, there would, the boat, you, you as the board will have to collectively decide whether or not you want to put forward the conveyance of that property to the Neighborhood Trust, or whether you decide that you want to try to sell it on the open market to some developer. That will entirely be your initial vote, and then we'll certainly have to get the voters' approval, they'll have to go back to a special town or annual town meeting to convey any of that property to anybody.
Okay. Anything on that issue, folks, anything more? That's Diane.
Diane Robbins, Mokas, Arundel Main. So this, I take it, is the property that we discussed quite some time ago, that's in back of the dump? Back of the old dump?
It's a, yeah, there's property that abuts the transfer station, that's correct.
So I'm gonna reiterate what I said before. Number one, the property belongs to the town of Arundel. I, as a taxpayer, would not want to see anything given to anybody for any type of housing. I already give enough out of my paycheck, out of my state taxes, out of my federal taxes. This is property owned by the town of Arundel, this should be put on the open market and it should be sold, because I'm, I've been, even though I own plenty of land, I still watch to see what the land prices are in the town of Arundel, and they're very high right now. Giving it so somebody can have free housing, and I don't care if it's neighborhood housing or workforce housing, I don't care what it is. I started from dirt, nothing. I bought a house for twenty nine nine on five point nine acres at sixteen and a half percent interest. And we paid every stinking cent of it. I am not in favor of giving people free housing. I am not in favor of giving people free housing unless there are extenuating circumstances. And I am certainly not in favor of giving any Arundel taxpayer-owned property to any organization to build housing. It should be put on the open market and sold for what you can get for it, and put it towards
Okay, moving on to business, I guess we only have approval of both a payable and a payroll warrants left to handle, yes.
Come up.
All in favor? Any other business, folks? Anybody?
Move to adjourn, seven fifty PM.
All in favor? We're done.
Thank you.